And then coming back to Kelly. You know, we don't have a large diverse population. Looking at eighty-three percent white students, three percent Asian, five percent black, five percent Hispanic, and three percent Native American. The numbers are on the side. And then I also included for you the number of students that we have on IEPs and the number of students that are economically disadvantaged or low-income families of sixty-four students at Kelly. So I think when we look at our demographics, one of the things that I really noted coming back from Lewis and Clark to Kelly is moving from a non-title or moving from a non-title one building into a title building and then coming back to a non-title one building. It's not that we don't have those students that are in need of the support. We just have a smaller number of them. And how do we dig deep within the resources that we have and that were allotted as a non-title one school to meet the needs of those kids whose, um, I don't know, demographics show that they need a little bit of extra support? How do we meet those needs at Kelly? So we are currently at four hundred and seventy-two students. We have twenty-four general education classrooms for a nice balance of four at each grade level. We can knock on wood because those bubbles kind of tend to come through every now and then. And then we do, my last celebrating success presentation was on our new special education suite at Kelly Elementary when we combined Esser dollars along with district funds and built two new special education classrooms in the middle of our building along with a sensory room that we're going to follow up on tonight a little bit with you so you can see how we have taken that and improved that somewhat over the past, of course, of the past two years. We do still have that special education suite, which was initially set aside for one autism classroom and one special education classroom. And this summer, when we reconfigured our program, special programs and our self-contained programs in the district, Kelly School was added, was given the opportunity to add an additional autism classroom. And so now both of those classrooms are right in the center of our building. And we are working with two autism classrooms now as opposed to one. So it's nice to have them as the hub of our school. And it's really nice to see that collaboration that those teachers are able to have now on a daily basis, right across the hallway from one another. One of our autism classrooms is a K-two setting. The other one is three-five, but those teachers collaborate so nicely together. In doing that, it did cause a bit of a space issue for us in our building. And so we will talk a little bit about how we had to reconfigure our building in order to maintain the sensory room and also to give Emily Rositas a classroom, which was rather important at that time. So that's looking at Kelly as a whole. The numbers you saw on the slide previous are now broken down to percentage, IEP students being twelve percent of our population and low income being fifty percent or fifteen percent, sorry, of our population. Mrs. Schmidt's going to talk a little bit about our staff.
Good evening, everyone. I get the fun stuff. I get to celebrate our staff. So currently, we are one hundred and eleven strong and growing, hopefully growing. We still have some positions to fill in the lunchroom and with paraprofessionals. This crew, Kelly and I talk a lot about how lucky we are. They are just a team that worked together so well. They're the ones that helped us achieve our HRS Level One and Two certification. Level One being that safe, supportive, and collaborative culture. Level Two being effective teaching in every classroom. And then we got them down into a smaller group for a photo opportunity. Here's our certified crew. They, um, gosh, it says committed to student success. They really are. They just go above and beyond every day. This team consists of twenty-four of our classroom teachers, our special ed team, all of our specialists, and then our support staff. And then the last team, and it's not all of them. There's many more, but they weren't all here in picture day. But this is our paraprofessionals. Because of our autism rooms, we have inclusion and program pairs at Kelly. And we couldn't do what we do every day without this team. So we are just really lucky and blessed by all the staff that we have at Kelly. And we're going to move into our ELA and math. Kelly's going to start with ELA and talk about that historical and baseline data that we looked at for NDSA and then our star fall and progress monitoring window comparison.
So similar to the school board, we have set our be legendary goals. And Jay Nelson Kelly is going to increase our English Language Arts proficiency levels from sixty-three percent proficient or advanced proficient in 2022, 23, up to seventy-two percent by the spring of twenty-twenty, it says September of 2028, that fall year of September of 2028. It's going to be interesting when we take a look at that. You can see we are starting off with a high percentage of students who are proficient or advanced proficient at Kelly School. And at sixty-three percent, that doesn't mean we back off and we don't continue to dig and look at pockets and look for ways that we can continue to improve and grow our students socially, emotionally, and academically along the way so that we can support the district's goals as well. It will be interesting to take a look at, you know, we are basing this on NDSA. And I just had a parent meeting today where we spoke with some parents about looking at this achievement data and getting them ready for enrichment opportunities in middle school and looking at the new NDA plus test that will come up in the spring. What's that going to look like, right? So what is that going to do to our baseline data and how's that going to impact our kiddos moving into middle school when their scores are going to be maybe a little bit different? So we'll have to learn alongside of the school board and along with our district leaders on how to best understand that data so that we can stay on the trajectory that we intend to reach by 2028. So what we did here for you is we took a look at our ELA. This is only NDSA. And I wrote the numbers in red for you in the middle, and that is our fourth grade population, just so you would get a feel of how those scores are in relation to the bars next to them. Third grade is blue, fourth grade is red, and fifth grade is yellow. I think if you could kind of take a look here on the sidebar or on the side chart and just look at the nice progression we have of that group of students starting in 2021, coming out of COVID at forty percent with that third grade crew, the next year moving up to fifty-five percent proficient. And then by the time they were fifth grade, the nice bounce back we got at seventy-one proficient or percent proficient on the NDSA. Actually, if you take a look at that chart and move the diagonal lines, there is only one small dip. And it goes from our third graders in twenty-one, twenty-two to our fourth graders in twenty-two, twenty-three, and they dropped by two percentage points, but then rebounded up to seventy percent by the time they were fifth graders. So we're seeing some nice, nice growth at Kelly School. And I think when we look at that, it really comes down to how we are using our STAR data, which is shown here for you in green. So what we really strive to do is take a look at our STAR data and use that as a predictor for how our students are going to perform on the NDSA assessment. And what we've done for you here tonight is highlighted any score that is under fifty percent. So last year, we were at a forty percent proficiency striving for that in our STAR tests. This year, the district has raised that to now a fifty percent being our standard. So what I did was went through and highlighted everything that is below fifty percent for you. And then the green is our fall STAR assessments. And this is broken down, obviously, by subgroups for your student groups. And then we also just have the opportunity to show with you the growth that we've got going just this year alone. So when you're looking at our subgroup data, all subgroups have shown growth this fall with the exception when we're looking at the green. For example, under all students, we had fifty-eight percent proficient in the fall. In September and November, we're up to seventy-one percent. So we've had some nice growth there. Our Asians group went from seventy-three percent up to a hundred percent. What we noted when we went through this is we took a look at our Native American population. And although they are green at sixty percent proficient on our fall STAR test, they did drop in November to fifty percent, still keeping them in the green. But we want to take a look at that because if you look above that, they did drop from forty-four percent to seventeen percent proficient on the NDSA test in the spring. So we will continue to track those subgroups. Nice to see the growth that we've got going. If you just take a look at our low-income students in the fall, thirty-eight percent were proficient on our STAR and now up to fifty-four percent just a couple months later. Nice growth there. Actually, the percentage doubled for our IEP students, which we were really happy about. So that shows that we're really trying to focus in on those groups and look at how we can help them successfully navigate the assessments that they need to take. Some of our inputs that we're doing at Kelly School, and I feel really proud of our group of teachers as to how they have embraced the curriculum prescribed by the Grand Forks Public Schools. We, Tiffany Manasa is not up here with us tonight, but I can't go through this presentation without telling you what a tremendous job she does as our instructional coach at Kelly School. She is a mom at a Red River Football Banquet tonight, and we said that is much more important than standing up here with us. So being a mom is super important. So she's not here tonight, but I don't want this to have the opportunity to just miss the opportunity to say what a nice job she does, working alongside our classroom teachers to ensure that they are following our prescribed district curriculum and staying on target with our pacing guides. Because I think the fidelity of the curriculum, the manner that we are following the curriculum with fidelity is paying off in our data. We are seeing some, some nice growth. Yeah. We also, like similar across the board, we have updated standards and proficiency scales that have come out of our Amy Bartsch's department. We really focused last year on targeted small group instruction and literacy. Getting creative with the Esser dollars running out. We lost our interventionist, being a non-title one school. So we did lose our interventionist, and that falls now on Ms. Rhonda, our lone elementary literacy specialist when it comes to ELA. But we have to get creative because Rhonda cannot do it all by herself. So what we have done to tap and fill in those gaps, we have used our specialists, gym, music, library, social studies, any sorts of pockets they have in their schedules that are open. Granted, we give them their thirty minutes of lunch and their prep, right? But the pockets that they have open in their schedule, they are now responding to kids. It's kind of nice having Jake Shower come down from a middle school ELA position into FIAED because he's tapping into our intermediate students and doing some nice ELA interventions with them during some times that he has open in his day. And I'm not, you know, the other specialists are doing it as well, but we have really enjoyed having Jake's ELA background in that FIAED position. It's been a benefit for our intermediate kids for sure. Witten Wisdom Pilot, we have a nice group of teachers working on that. And Mrs. Variano Rhonda will talk with you about the nice gains we're seeing with our students in those Witten Wisdom classrooms, as well as TIFs work with coaching and our instructional rounds that are happening at the building. And then Mrs. Dodd's does an incredible job promoting Elba at Kelly School, gets everybody on board, including the community. She worked with a small retailer this year to just get those books listed on a little site, push that all out to her parents so that parents could go and actually purchase those books if they didn't want to go stand in line at the library and wait for the Elba books to come out. So we have some PTO members that are really involved. So we have some PTO members that are really involved in the marketplace in Grand Forks, and we're really trying to tap in those small businesses and use their expertise and help them support our Kelly students as well. Inputs and outputs. When you look at some of the inputs and outputs, you know, the output is the data and the progress monitoring that we've got going. But scheduling our team meetings with Rhonda and Tiff both to collaborate to look at what we're doing in our classrooms. We just had a kindergarten data dig now that we are finished with our fall progress monitoring window. We met with kindergarten today and really dug into that data, and those meetings are led by Tiff and Rhonda. We also have big data digs that we will have now with our next early out. And we will look at it schoolwide and then look at how we are going to adjust our interventions that are taking place. Regular progress monitoring is happening with our CBM or cognitive-based measure data. And those standards and proficiency scales coming down from the state and our district really have helped, I believe, our teachers to narrow that focus. As they worked with the new report card last week, it was nice to see that they know exactly what they are targeting with our kids and exactly how our kids are responding to the instruction. Mrs. Schmidt's going to talk about math.
So our math goal looks very similar to our ELA goal, and it is that Jay Nelson Kelly School will increase math proficiency levels from 64% proficient or advanced in 2022, '23 to 72% proficient or advanced by September of 2028. And that's monitored and measured by that NDA plus. And you'll see it's just a nice, steady growth. We're working towards 66% this year. And with the new state assessment, we'll get a new baseline, and we'll hopefully see that growth continue. What we did notice in math as we dug into this last year, this is set up just like the ELA was. You can see third, fourth, and fifth and compare. But we've noticed if you follow the chart on the right, if you watch those kids go from third grade to fourth grade to fifth grade, there always is that dip in fourth grade. And so as a team, we really came together and did a lot of questioning. Is it our everyday math curriculum? Is it our tier one instruction? Is it the timing of the state assessment? Are we doing it too early? Is it our pacing? So we came together and had those conversations. And then we decided we needed to do something called a vertical PLC. And what we did is each grade level had a designated time, and this was last spring, that they met with the grade level that up from them and then another time where they met with the grade level below. And it was just great conversation. I'll give you an example for our fourth and fifth graders. So first, they really talked about when our kids go from fourth grade to fifth grade, what are some skills when they enter fifth grade that maybe those standards or skills they're still struggling in? So they kind of made a list. Some of the things that came out were basic facts, and it could be addition, subtraction, multiplication, division. Fractions came up. Measurement came up. Then they took it and they dug into the curriculum. Is the curriculum hitting it hard enough? Do fourth grade teachers maybe need to spend a little bit more time on the fractions? For basic facts, can we do something different? Can we supplement somehow to give kids more time to get more secure in those basic facts? And so those conversations really, really led us to change our instruction a little bit, change our focus in each grade level. We also, as a school, decided this spring, we're going to do math last during state testing. That'll give all of our teachers a little bit longer to get through some of that curriculum and maybe hit some of those skills that were more challenging for our students. So just teachers reacting to the data, and hopefully we'll see this trend change as we go. Then here's by student groups. And again, like Kelly said, for ELA, the ones that are highlighted in red are the ones that didn't make that 50% cut score. I think the great thing about this one, though, if you use STAR as a predictor and you compare fall to our November testing window, every one of those groups has grown. Yes, like low income and IEP students are still red, but they've shown some growth. So hopefully that trend will continue, and we'll continue to focus on those groups and watch their results. So the inputs, a lot of these are the same that came up in ELA. Some of them are different. We can, with confidence, say that our teachers are using our tier one everyday math curriculum with fidelity. We know their pacing is on point because they are getting through all the curriculum. Now, because we're not a title one school, we do not have an interventionist in math. So we needed to get creative again. So I'm going to jump down to where it says classroom specialist alternative schedule. So at Kelly this year, we have three classroom specialists. And when they are not covering or subbing for a classroom teacher or specialist, and they're not covering for meetings, they each have an alternative schedule, which has them pulling kids that need a little bit more time on specific math skills. So you might see them sitting in the hall, working on addition facts. They might be working on fractions. They might be working on counting coins. Now, it's not consistent, but without that funding for an interventionist, it's better than nothing at all. Okay? And then jumping back to enrichment, we have 17 fifth graders that are receiving weekly enrichment services. And our enrichment teacher also is just a great resource for our other grade level teachers. If they have students in there that just need a little bit more of a challenge, she can provide those resources and ideas to use in the classroom. Pushing instruction, that has to do with our special ed team. A lot of times when students have an IEP goal that focuses on math, instead of pulling the kids out, they will push in during that tier one instruction just to be another source of help. Because tier one can be challenging for kids that are on IEPs. And then, like Kelly said, we've got the updated standards and proficiency scales. And I talked about our vertical PLCs. We know that's going to be important moving forward as we do the new state testing. And our district is just starting to pilot new math curriculum. So we'll continue to do those vertical PLCs. Some more inputs, our team meetings with our coach to collaborate and discuss instructional strategies. One thing I think that Tiff Manasa has done a great job with, a lot of our teachers for math will start whole group lesson, and then they go into small groups where it's more targeted skills, and they can change the pace and their approach depending on the kids in the group. So that's a great strategy that she has helped teachers work through. And again, we do our data digs after assessment and progress monitoring window. We do the progress monitoring with our CBM data. And we've talked about the state standards and the proficiency scales, just helping teachers narrow their focus. And Kelly, it's back to you.
Our goal for attendance is to hit that 95% mark and give you just a little spoiler. We're there right now. So that was exciting because we weren't at the beginning of the school year. And so as we started to dig into the data this fall, it's like, okay, where are we at currently? So we set that, let's, 95% is what our goal was. We were at 94% last year. We kind of hovered in that, well, coming out of COVID, it was lower, obviously, but we did hover around that 92, 93% for a while. Last year got up to 94, so let's just keep going. Okay? So let's go up to 95 this year. When we dug in and took a look at the attendance data that we want to note, we do see the red and the pink at the bottom, who's going to struggle with our attendance. It is our low income or economically disadvantaged students. And our IEP students are those two groups at the bottom. So how can we support those families getting their kids to school, right? We are lucky at Kelly School this year to have just one counselor, but two finally. We have two full-time counselors, and we also have a social worker who is not full-time because she's doing some 1915 I work, but she is in our building five days a week. So that's a big bonus. We do tap into her and have her there, at least to just do check-ins with kids and using her time to help support families. I can't say enough how much Kelly School appreciates the work of Jennifer Little, who's our district attendance specialist. We utilized her last year for three or four, three families that she really worked well with, and those students are all doing a great job this fall. So it's nice when we need that support to reach out to her and get that. So we'll continue to strive for that. We have 68% of our students that they've, are at that 95% more, 95% or more of our school days. 24% have attended between 90 and 95% of our school days so far. 7% have attended between 80 and 90%. And we do have 1% of our students that have attended less than 80% of our school days. And our social worker is on that, along with myself and Mrs. Schmidt and our counselors. We have what are called at ARC meetings, at risk kids, and we're talking about attendance at there on a regular basis. So what we do is, as said, we carefully monitor schoolwide attendance of those demographic groups, and then we develop interventions as needed. Sometimes we've found it's best to start with the teachers because they have the best relationship with a family. If you're going to get a social work call, you know, coming on cold, that doesn't feel great for families. Or a call from the principal about attendance, that doesn't feel great either. So we really try to start with those quick seesaw messages, emails between teachers, and then upping it to a phone call from a teacher. Hey, we really miss so-and-so. What can we do to help get your student here? And then we will again meet and talk about that at our ARC team meetings. And then we'd like to have parents come in, and we talk about what kind of planning can we do? Is it as simple as we need a new phone with a new battery? I mean, what do we need? Do we need an alarm clock? Do we need help with transportation? Do we need to start looking at our busing options? What, what can we do to help support that family? And then we track that in attendance with Panorama that has really synced nicely with Power School. So we can use those visuals to look at our attendance. And then we have kids who are doing weekly check-ins. And as I said, we do rely on Jennifer Little if, as needed. But here we are at, right now, we have a 96.3% average daily attendance rate. So we want to keep that going into the new year and know that we are hitting our attendance goal, and we want to continue to do that. So we have 95 point, we're going to obviously round that one up to hit our 95. But most importantly is that, you know, we have that percentage rate of 96.3. We might be blinking back. Okay.
Talk fast. She told me to talk fast if you didn't hear her. So I'm going to talk a little bit about our PBIS, which is that Positive Behavioral Interventions and Support, and our SEL goal. So our goal is, in order to decrease behavior referrals by 50% during 2024, '25 school year, Kelly's staff will implement our new schoolwide behavior intervention flow chart with fidelity. And then our tagline this year is building character brick by brick. This is when you show them your t-shirts. Yeah. We didn't plan that. So I need to give you a little bit of background on our behavior intervention flow chart. So last, the end of January last year, Kelly and I were in San Antonio for the HRS conference, and we got a text message saying, hey, can some of us get together and just, you know, problem solve behavior and come up with some, some plans? And we're like, sure, go for it. So by the time we got back from San Antonio, they had, had created this flow chart. And the flow chart really breaks down behaviors, and they classify them as minors versus majors. It defines what the minor or major behaviors can be. And then on the far right and far left, it's really step by step what teachers do when those behaviors occur. Now, this team of teachers knew that we can't just roll this out to students because we're assuming that they know what our expectations are. They know what we want from them. So they created this fabulous slideshow that reviewed all of the Kelly School expectations. Here's our expectations. We had, right now, we have seven different areas where we have expectations that fall under being respectful, responsible, and safe. So they streamlined it a little bit, made it a little bit more kid-friendly, easier to read. And we spent three weeks in every classroom, teaching, reteaching, modeling, practicing, praising kids for meeting these expectations. Once we got through those three weeks, then we went back to that minor and major flow chart and taught kids about this is what's going to happen. And then we, they also came up with what is called our Cougar Pride Time. So every Friday at 2:35 for 20 minutes, students who have met those expectations get Cougar Pride Time. It's just a fun time in their classroom planned by the teachers and the students. And now if kids get a major or if they get three minors during the week, they go to study hall, which is just a time to sit and reflect and miss out on the fun. And what has also helped with this is PBIS is a program that at Kelly School, we've been doing it for so many years that it's become part of our culture. Every year we have a theme, and we're using the Lego theme this year with building character brick by brick. And that song, Everything is Awesome, is right from the movie. Dave's looking at me like he knows it. So, and then Ms. King will talk a little bit more about our assemblies and how we recognize positive behavior. But all these things have helped us meet our goals so far this year. So we just compared it to last year. So September, we had, last September, we had five behavior referrals. Kids call them fix-it plans. And then this year in September, there were nine. October, 21 last year, and only eight this, this year. And November, 14 last year, and seven this year. And so totally, we had 50 referrals in the fall last year, and now we're down to 24. So it is working. All right, Ms. King. Oh, no, this is me still. No, is that you?
No, this is me.
Okay.
Hey, y'all. Okay. All right, so I'm going to be talking about SEL and PBIS inputs. So Ms. Schmidt just went over the behavior flow chart matrix. So I'll talk a little bit about the K through 2 counselor focus and 3 through 5 counselor focus. So K through 2 is on emotional regulation and 3 through 5 is self-efficacy. So we use our Panorama SEL survey results to come up with this. It kind of shows which area we need most focus on. In this fall, with our results, K through 2 was emotional regulation and 3 through 5 self-efficacy. And so that's how we can come up with our tier 2 interventions, also collaborating with teachers and parents. And yeah, so that's just kind of how we can form our groups. And then lunch bunches are utilized by the counselors to help grow and foster relationships with our kids. It's very hard to really meet, you know, and get to know all your students, especially if you're new. This is my second year here at Kelly. And last year, when I was the only counselor, I had like 510 kids, I think, last year. And it's really hard to meet and really get to know each student. And then this year with Ms. Pelechio, she's K through 2. And her being new, it's just a really good idea to meet with students in a group as well. They come in your office, we play games, we talk, we get to know each other. And it's also a great way, too, for them to foster relationships with each other. Especially sometimes I do put kiddos who maybe don't really speak with each other outside of class, or I've noticed, and kind of see if we can form friendships there. And then we do our monthly PBIS meetings and assemblies. So we plan, get together monthly, plan and organize these assemblies. We do a character theme word for the month, and actually a grade level is focused on that one. And the team will get together, and usually they'll incorporate the kids in the grade, and they'll do a skit, a play, come up with something to talk about that word for the month. And then also we do student recognition. So if you get three Cougar cards, you're recognized, and you get a bracelet. And the kids really love it. It's really cool and sweet. They love to get recognized in front of the whole school and go up, and it's just really neat. You should see their smiles. And then CVIC collaboration. So we have a CVIC therapist that comes in and helps facilitate tier 2 interventions, bounce back, and anger coping. Bounce Back is a trauma-informed group and anger coping as well. These are 10-week groups. And then they also come in at the tier one level, and they do Taco and Friendships That Work. Taco is typically in first grade, and that's also talking about friendships as well. It's just a different name they have for it. And then Friendships That Work is typically at the fourth grade level. And then our SEL PBIS output. So our Power School data is used to log So our Power School data is used to log, for behavioral logs, sorry. And then our Panorama surveys and HRS surveys are used to, sorry, are used to, for helping us like for our climate and culture of the school. We use those results to help us with those. And then relationship mapping is used for making sure that each and every student at Kelly has at least one trusted adult at the school. So we use that to make sure that every student has at least one trusted adult that they can go to. And then Cougar Cards, again, we're use this as incentives and for, you know, to reinforce positive behavior. And then our recaps with CVIC staff. So after we do our groups, they come back. We actually send out parent surveys and teacher surveys. And with those surveys, we will talk about how we can improve for next round of groups, what works really well. And again, if there's any like modifications that need to be made and things like that. So, yeah. And then celebrating success.
All right. I wasn't kidding Dr. Brenner when I said I was really excited to do this because it is truly an honor to be up here and sharing this information from Kelly and how well our school is doing. So we would like to celebrate with all of you, our teachers and their use of effective teaching with literacy skills to move our student growth, which is evident by the data you are about to see by each grade level and individual classroom. All right. So in September, students in kindergarten and first grade were assessed using the STAR Early Literacy Assessment. And these assessments measure the foundational literacy skills such as phonemic awareness, phonics, functional vocabulary, and comprehension. And in grades two through five, students are assessed using the STAR reading, which measures students' reading comprehension, vocabulary, and fluency. So on these slides now, these represent the median score for each of our classrooms by grade level on the STAR Early Literacy Assessment and the STAR reading. So in kindergarten, you'll see the blue bar represents the assessment in the fall or September. And the green bar represents then the latest assessment in November. So we're pretty excited to see that growth. And the two stars represent the two pilot classrooms that we have in kindergarten. So that's throughout our data presentation. So in first grade, we only have one teacher that's piloting Witten Wisdom. And you'll see that there's very little growth in that grade because she was already at, yeah, and only three of her students in the fall were not proficient on the STAR Early Literacy Assessment. So at the beginning of the school year, that means our kindergarten teachers are rocking it, right? They're doing a solid job with their teaching. And the other thing I just wanted to point out, too, that the Witten Wisdom curriculum is very rich in comprehension and vocabulary skills. And these scores for these first graders will be even more evident next year in second grade when they're being assessed with those skills. Okay, so moving on to second. So if you, so with what I just said, if you notice our second-grade teacher, that's the pilot teacher for Witten Wisdom, look at what that score did from the fall to November. So wonderful, wonderful progress. In second grade, seeing it again, then in third grade, and even more growth to celebrate then in fourth and fifth grade. We don't have any pilot teachers in fifth grade, which is why we were able to get two in kinder. But we're so, so excited. And I wanted to just make sure that you know, that we know, that we still have work to do to get all of our students to score proficient on the STAR assessments. But with this growth and this like two-month window of growth, we feel really confident and we're heading in the right direction to attain our end-of-year goal. So we are excited. And we were also thinking, if you wanted to know, our next assessment window is January 21 through February 3. So that'll be the next progress monitoring window for these students. So, all right.
I get to do the fun part, I think. So we ran out of space, basically, for a sensory room. And us as a special ed team, we're trying to brainstorm what we could do to help with behaviors. So we went to the PTO, asked for some funding. We did some penny wars for that to help us get funding. So we wanted to just thank PTO, our parents, Building and Grounds, and then the special ed team. Again, we just didn't have enough space. So what could we do? We were thinking, two of us could go into one room and teach that way, but then we were like, well, what if there's a behavior? We just weren't sure. So one teacher gave up a room and we, that's why I had to move to a different room. It all worked out. So we created a sensory room for kids, all students at Kelly, not just special ed all. A calming, focusing, emotional regulation, relaxation, work on some fine motor skills and sensory processing. So how it works is students check in. There's a check-in form that you'll see in a little bit. They set a timer for five to 10 minutes. They select an activity to do. They clean up and then return to class. All students are introduced to the sensory room the first time they go and the expectations. And who supervises it is our paras or us special ed teachers bring kids throughout the day to use that space. Here is just some of the top 10 lists that kids use. That blue box is called the snuggle box, and that's the one that's used the most. You can climb into it and climb under that pink thing and/or you can hide underneath it. Kids love the sand, stress balls. The climbing wall, Mike Brockmeyer and Kelly Parent helped build that. And then Buildings and Grounds helped to secure it. The temple track is what's below it. And then we just have some other things, too, in there. Our daily visits, so September is when we started. We were at 148 daily visits and we jumped up to 233. So it's used throughout the day. Sometimes multiple students go in throughout the day, but it's been used. And then the average visit, or total visit, sorry. And then the average visits per day is 14. And we just keep increasing that as we go. There is our reflections sheet. So when they first come in, they need a circle how they're feeling. And then what did they use to calm themselves down? And then how are they feeling after they used it? And there's coming in and coming out and how they were feeling.
Again, I can't say enough. When Luann mentioned that the classroom teachers or some of our team leaders reached out to us when we were in San Antonio and said, hey, we really want to build a behavior matrix. We really, we had really lots of behaviors at Kelly School last year, and we were all feeling it. And they built that from the ground up as well as the sensory room. Special ed teachers came in and said that room in our special ed suite is way too small. We need to be able to serve all of our kids. They had a binder of research for me. And I said, okay, we don't need a binder of research. I'm in. Just, we just have to figure out how we get the money. And then we have to figure out the spacing issues. So to you and your team, for them to figure out, we do have someone now teaching in our workroom, which, so we gave up a teacher workroom. But they really rolled up their sleeves and said, we got to make this happen for our kids. And the PTO was incredibly supportive and paid for that entire sensory room, which is super awesome. So that is our successes at Kelly. Those are the things we are working on. We appreciate your time tonight. And did you have any questions or comments?
Any questions or comments? Mr. Clevin?
Yeah, that's, three questions on the sensory room. Is it prescribed, like the students told to go there? Or is it voluntary? Or is it a mix?
Yep. Is there, okay, do you want to take it? Yeah, you go, girl.
So I have a Google form that I send out to all classroom teachers. So if the classroom teacher thinks that a student might benefit from it, they'll fill out that Google form and then we'll try and figure out who can bring that student to the classroom.
Okay. One student at a time in there?
No, we have multiple kids.
Okay. And can I come visit for a nap? It looks comfortable.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I have been noticed, talking to staff about, they kind of go in there themselves, right? And that's good. It's a nice calming spot to just go in and hang out. Yes, I've used it myself. So it's a nice environment.
Dr. Long, I think you're next.
Just a comment on a couple of questions. I'm just so impressed with the professionalism and the reports that we're getting, not only from your school, but some of the other schools. And I think the public that are listening probably don't understand, it can be a little nerve-wracking coming to the board and the top administration of the school district to present. I mean, you guys don't look it, but I've seen it before. And this isn't something like, it's like, well, it's 5:20, oh, I better get my stuff ready and I have to come and present. This takes hours and hours to get ready. So I think we really appreciate it, but it's also very valuable for us. One of my questions is, I've seen this in my day job and I've seen it more with high schools, but I'm wondering about more elementary, is the mental health stress that we're seeing in kids nowadays? And we've seen, you know, the absentee rates in the high schools are much higher and stuff. What kind of mental health stresses are we seeing in the elementary population? And what are you guys trying to do about it?
Yeah. So I think a lot, like at Kelly School, especially when we talked about our demographics and especially my three through five area with self-efficacy, we have a lot of kids who are very hard on themselves that want to do very well. And that's great. But it also comes with making the mistakes. They don't handle making mistakes very well. It's kind of that mindset of, you know, if I make a mistake, I'm just dumb, right? Like, I'm going to fail, right? It's that catastrophizing type thing. So we work a lot with, obviously, coping skills. And the sensory room has helped with that a lot, too. Like they said, it's not only for sped, but all of our students can use it. So we have been using a lot with kids who we see are having like high anxiety with academics, utilizing that room to help them calm down, to feel less stressed, and then come out feeling a lot better. And so, does that hope that kind of answers some of it a little bit?
And just one other question. It's a hypothetical. Okay, it's Christmas time. There's a big package under the Christmas tree. It says, "To Kelly Elementary School, from the school board and top administration."
Oh, I love this question.
What's the one thing you would like to see, that you'd like to get, that you haven't got, that you could use in your toolkit of all this?
Do you want to take it, Rhonda? Do you know what you would want in your toolkit?
And you can all answer if you want to.
I was going to say, an interventionist. Another one of me.
Behavior, math, ELA, any sort of support that we could get for those kids, either with behaviors or academics that were running circles to try to meet those needs.
I think that gets back to my first question about the mental health aspects. Thank you.
Yep.
Other comments or questions from both rooms? Mrs. Flynn?
I joked with Ms. Tannahill before we started. I said, are you on a 45-minute timeframe here? And she said, no, we'll be done quick. It's really fun to talk about yourself and your school and all the great things. So thanks for being here today. I have three questions. The first one is, we went through some budget realignment exercises this past year and intro to kindergarten is no longer. So curious about if you've seen impacts from that, if you've been able to handle that shift a little bit, if you've seen no changes.
I feel like we definitely have seen, our numbers seem to be pretty low at the beginning of the school year.
Numbers.
For assessment data. So we didn't seem to be starting out as high as we're used to having that intro to kindergarten. We had almost close to 100%, would you say, attendance of kindergarten students at Kelly. So most, if not all, had the opportunity to come to school before school actually started. And I feel like that definitely has changed our numbers by not having that. But we're rolling up our sleeves.
I think the piloting helps as well, that you have two in kindergarten. So that's nice. On the assessment for math, I believe, the Native American population almost close to doubled their scores. That seemed to be an anomaly that stuck out between the populations. Do you know why that is?
Great question.
And that's okay if you don't, but just curious about that.
We did have a changeover in that demographic group of some kids. So, but when you look at the growth that we've got going right now, it's turning around. So I would say it was mostly an influx and an outflux of kids. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I said almost doubled, but it more than doubled.
Yeah. Yeah, we had some kids move in and move out.
Okay. And then last question, along with the budgetary kind of conversation, Kelly's seen some facility upgrades in the past couple of years with some ESSR funding and stuff like that. Have you noticed a change with anything due to the facility upgrades?
Thank you. Air conditioning, thank you. I was a teacher at Kelly for years before I went to Lewis and Clark and went from no air conditioning in my first-grade room to no air conditioning in the entire building at Lewis and Clark. So that's been amazing. The special education suite has been amazing. And the fact that these teachers have been flexible with the space that we do have, it's just been really nice to see how our building responds to change. Our custodian is amazing. He tried to leave Kelly as well, similar to what I tried to do, and left and went to Central for a couple of years and came back, not even a couple of years, a couple of months, left and went back. And it's just a great place to be. So we're really proud of our building.
Thanks.
Sure, go ahead. First of all, thank you. Thank you for being here. I just want to touch on what Mrs. Variano touched on when we need another one of you. I think what some people don't understand is when we have Title I schools and we have additional resources, we focus a lot on the bottom quartile. And where we don't focus a lot on oftentimes is the top 25% of our students or the top 10% of our students. And so in some of our Title I schools, we can see magnificent growth. Somebody might not be on grade level, a student may not be on grade level, but may have made significant band growth from a literacy or math perspective. But when you're already starting at 63% or 63 percentile or 73 percentile, it's tough to move that needle. And people don't always understand that. So I certainly can appreciate your comment about, we could use more help. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item four of our agenda, this is our public comment period. I don't have any blue public comment forms turned in. Are there members of the public who wish to speak at this time? We'll move on to item 5A. This is the Government Affairs Committee report. Mrs. Flynn, I believe you're taking the lead on this.
Thank you. We met on September 5th as a governmental affairs committee. Part of it was in preparation for our legislative forum as well. We had a good meeting. There were some legislators present and then had a really great forum, understanding the needs and priorities of the other taxing entities in Grand Forks. I think this group is very aware and on the same page as to really supporting the kids in the Grand Forks Public School District. It's so interesting when you bring people together to not only hear about different needs, but it's largely about how do we make Grand Forks a better community? And so this information was not new to some. We had some good discussion. We had some people asking some thought-provoking questions. So I think it just continues to be an avenue for us to connect in a different way before the session, but really utilize each other as resources when it comes down to the legislative session. So looking forward to continuing the work of that committee and everyone else. And I know Dr. Brenner has made a point to say that he'll be advocating with the groups and Team Grand Forks. the, with the groups and Team Grand Forks, and really trying to make sure that our story is told, so.
First of all, any comments from other committee members? Mr. Clevyn or Mr. Anderson, anything to add before we open it up for questions?
I did get a little feedback from some of the other attendees at the meeting on Thursday, and it was solicited, like, I wanted, like, feedback, hey, what did you think of the presentation the school board and the committee made? And they both said, maybe shorten the list. And they said, it's great, there's a table, you know, priority A, priority B. They appreciated that, but they suggested maybe, when it comes time to crunch time, if you will, that we shorten the list of priorities a little bit, to be more focused. Other than that, they were, you know, like, they were, you know, like every, they were satisfied with the whole event, put it that way. So that was the only comment I'd make.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, anything to add? Questions from other board members about this committee report? Dr. Lund?
Just a quick question. We've talked about green, Team Grand Forks, how, how it really works in the collaborative. I'm wondering if we have a team education where we collaborate with some of the other school districts at the state level? Because a lot of times, our concerns are very similar to some of the other school districts, and I don't know, that may already occur, Dr. Brenner, and you may ask that. Some are unique. You know, you look at the, the base districts, well, it's mine out on us. But there are other things that are kind of uniform for a lot of that. And I didn't know if they're, if, if, because there's other school, school boards that have legislative committees, and certainly I know there are certain superintendents that are more active in Bismarck than other superintendents. I think Dr. Brenner's one of those that's active. So I just wondered if there was a, any collaborative effort with other school districts.
Be happy to answer that. The North Dakota Association of School Administrators, basically all superintendents, we had a delegate assembly about a week and a half ago, and we have 34, to Mr. Clevyn's point of having too many, we actually have 34 position statements. And then NDCL will also have some position statements coming out shortly, and they'll be, they'll be similar to what you see on this list as well. So, and to Dr. Lund's point, the, I feel sorry for the superintendents in Bismarck and Mandan, because they get called to the Capitol regularly. So it's really incumbent upon the rest of us to spend some time in Bismarck as well.
Other questions or comments about this report? Item was for discussion only, so we'll move on to six. This is, sure, go ahead, Mr. Clevyn.
I would like to move this into our, into the minutes, or some kind of formal entry into the record, this committee report? Like, rather than just for discussion, is it already part of the formal records, if you will, because it's in the agenda? Okay.
Thank you for asking the clar, no, no worries. Thank you for asking the clarifying question. I appreciate it. Six A is our consent agenda. I would seek a motion to approve the consent agenda. It's been moved by Mr. Clevyn, seconded by Mr. Larson. We'll take a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hodak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Manley is absent. Lund?
Yes.
Palmesino is absent. Larson?
Yes.
Clevyn?
Yes.
And Berger?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, and two absent.
Motion passes. Six B, consideration of curriculum proposal for 2025-2026. This is Mr. Matt Baki.
Board President, Members of the Board, thank you for the opportunity here tonight to present to you consideration for curriculum proposal for the 25-26 school year. As last discussed by Ms. Catherine Galach at our last board meeting, she went through all of these items in quite detail, so I won't reiterate the information, but just basically, a brief summary of proposed changes are below in your memo. And I would just reiterate the fact that administrative recommendation is to approve the curriculum proposals for the 25-26 school year. And I will stand for any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Baki?
Hi.
Yes, Dr. Hodak?
Can you tell me how parents are involved with these curriculum decisions?
Yeah, so, you know, throughout the process, it is my understanding that they're solicited input throughout the process. I know the committee has, at least from the CTE side of things, that there is involvement at the curriculum, what am I trying to say? What's the name of the group, Dr. Brenner? The advisory groups, thank you, the advisory groups. Just looking at him, I guess, gave me the answer, apparently. So, the advisory groups that they have solicited individuals within the community, as well as individuals that have ties to Grand Forks Public Schools from a parent perspective. Now, as far as specifically within the curriculum aspect outside of CTE, I, I could not answer that at this point, so.
And my other question is, how will this be, these changes be provided to parents and to students to understand what the new academy is going to do for them and taking it out of the schools?
Yeah, so, you know, when they go in and they sign up for the electives within their department, so for the students, they'll be able to sign up, and they'll get a list of courses that they'll be able to choose from. And so throughout that process, they'll see those changes. As well as when we see the course offerings, just in general, you're going to see a wider range of course offerings that will be allowed at the, or available at the secondary level than what currently is being offered. And so they'll have a, a wider variety of opportunities for them to participate in.
Other questions for Mr. Baki? Yes, Mr. Clevyn?
On the Spanish for Native Heritage speakers, it's a pilot. How long is the pilot?
My understanding is that it's a one-year pilot.
And how are we going to kind of measure success, and if we carry the program forward after the pilot here?
I can go ahead and take that one, Matt.
Okay, okay.
If you don't mind.
Yep, yep.
We'll monitor that, first of all, by enrollment. It's kind of like supply and demand. So if we see a number of students enroll, and then continue to enroll, that would be one way to do it. I'm not sure if teachers are going to do a pre and post assessment, but we can certainly recommend that. And I'm sorry, Ms. Galach had another community-related affair tonight, which was equally as important as tonight, and she would have more of the detailed information, but I can put that in Friday Focus to respond to your question specifically, and Dr. Hodak as well.
That would be great. And then was there thought just to do this as part of the normal Spanish language curriculum? Like, I worry about offering too many electives, and kind of maybe, I'll use the word distraction, but I don't want it to sound negative. But sometimes there's too many choices, and maybe you don't get the right choices. And so could it be rolled, and if it doesn't work, does it just become part of the curriculum for the Spanish class?
Well, if it doesn't work, it'll probably be back on the, with the Curriculum Review Committee and be brought to you next November for deletion. So we'll, we'll see how that goes, but.
And just to add to that, typically through this process, they vet through all of those options and opportunities. When they go through the process, they really look at, okay, is this an option that we could incorporate within our current offerings, or is this something we need to add on to it? Based on the fact that the recommendation came that they would like to add it on to it, they didn't feel like they were going to be able to do what they thought could incorporated within this class within what they currently offer. They felt probably like the curriculum was not to the level that they would be able to fit it into that, that course.
Well, and it's, it's a pilot. Seems like no risk, if you will, if you want to use those phrasings. So I'm not opposed to it, I'm just asking questions here, so appreciate the answers.
Sure. Any other questions from board members? Yes, Dr. Lund? There's a motion on the floor to approve the changes as outlined in this memo. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Clevyn. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Clevyn?
Yes.
Manley's absent. Hodak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Palmesino's absent. And Berger?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, two absent.
Motion passes. Six C, General Fund Financial Statement. Brandon Bobb.
President Berger, Members of the Board, back-to-back meetings with one of these reports, because we don't have a second meeting in December, so you get a few more numbers. The high, or the overview of this is, this is for the first five months through November 30th, with revenues of 50. almost $4 million, and expenditures of $38.7 million. This puts the revenues over expenditures at this point in the year of, at $11.8 million. The first report here does compare the actual against the budget. The first page of that is a nice summary. It just shows that, you know, we're on, revenues are at 38.8% of overall budgeted revenues. You'll see just within the contour there that the state revenues are coming in this time of year. The federal will continue to be throughout, but the local sources, you'll see, those really come in at the first part of the next calendar year, so right where we, we would be, expect to be there. Salaries and fringe benefits are trending just about 29%, which is right where we'd expect to be. Other expenditures are actually a little bit lower than what's expected, not to say they won't be spent. A lot of these things can be timing issues, or considerations. A lot more detail within this report here, but I like this second report. I'm just going to go down to that. That kind of shows that comparative year-over-year in a point in time. So how are we doing at this point in time versus the year prior? And you can see some of these changes, too. It shows that those local sources are just a little bit down at this point, whereas state and federal show an increase at this point in year on the revenue side. Salaries and fringe benefits are a little bit higher than the year prior, which is what you would expect, but at a lower rate than what some of the, the overall compensation package that was provided. So that would be, at work, some of that reduction of positions or that realignment effort. And you can see here that other expenditures is, is down quite a bit, as I just mentioned at the first part. And utilities, it's been a warmer fall, so in natural gas and, and electric overseeing that down quite a bit. What you'll notice, there are some notes here, happy to answer any questions there. But one thing I'll go to is, near the end of this report, page three of that second one, construction services. Last year at this time, we'd expended $3.3 million, and you can see, in this year, it's only $15,000. That's been deliberate in that we won't be expanding general ledger dollars into construction projects, and that 3.3 at this point was ESAR dollars. And the reason I point that out is this, is through the graphic charts, if you go to the, the last one, the general fund balance, it's going to probably appear to be a little overstated, and it's primarily due to those ESAR dollars at play here. So at this point last year, we would have expended $3.3 million, but given the nature of how we then asked for those monies back in, through reimbursement process with federal funds, we haven't gotten those revenues back in yet. So it's depressing prior years, and that would have been the case over the two prior years. So I expect coming out of these COVID dollars, you'll actually see that overall balance growing as quickly as that green bar in future years, and not being quite as depressed, and then coming up like the red and the blue bar, if that makes sense. That's the nature of those federal funds, lagging in reimbursement. So the expenditures come first, and then revenues a little bit later. Again, there's a lot more numbers than what I've provided the introduction to. Happy to answer any questions, but otherwise, the administrative recommendation would be to approve the General Fund Financial Statement for the period of July 1, 2024 through November 30, 2024.
Any questions from board members? Mr. Clevyn?
No questions.
I'd seek a motion to approve the General Fund Financial Statement for the period of July 1, 2024 through November 30, 2024. It's been moved by Mr. Clevyn. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Anderson. Is there any discussion?
Thank you. I just want to underscore, Brandon did allude to it, but I just want to underscore in bold print, underline it three times. On page three, where it talks about professional staff at the top of the page, 24, 25, actual expenditures a little over $17 million. 2023, 24 was $16.7 million. And you can see, see the year-to-date change, and that percentage is only 2.1%. And the actual compensation increase for year two of everybody's package was 5%. So that just illustrates the, a lot of the work that happened last year before July 1 rolled around. So if that's not clear, I'll, I'll restate it for anybody, but compensation packages year two of contracts went up by 5%, but our expenditures only went up by 2.1%.
Take a roll call vote.
Larson?
Yes.
Palmesino is absent. Clevyn?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Manley is absent. Anderson?
Yes.
Hodak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
And Berger?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, two absent.
Motion passes. This is item 7A, announcements. Are there any announcements for this evening? Mrs. Flynn?
I just wanted to give a shout out to some of the staff at Winship Elementary, specifically Betsy McIntyre, Colin Schaefer, and Logan Casa. I had the privilege of attending the Winship Day of Giving. I know Dr. Hodak was there at the same time I was, and some other board members. But if you don't know what that is, or haven't been, it is a very heartwarming, excellent opportunity for children to effectively shop through donated, new and gently-used gifts for identified members of their family. Some have eight people that they're shopping for, some have two. And then they go home with wrapped gifts in a bag. So I stayed a little extra to watch the kids and kind of help them get out, and some of them were dragging gifts on the bus because they had so many things. But how cool to, for them to bring home the gifts to their family and have an opportunity to maybe have some things that they wouldn't have otherwise had. So just give a shout out for them as something that they don't have to do, but is an extra added part of being in a, a community, neighborhood, school, so.
Thank you. Other announcements? 7B, Board Request for Future Consideration. Are there requests from board members? School Board Meeting norms. Dr. Lund, how did we do tonight?
Excellent.
And we are adjourned.